Yeah. We can, we can do this.
I just changed it, sorry.
All right, sir, go ahead.
All righty, ready to roll. Call the meeting into this planning commission is June twenty first, two thousand twenty three. If, Ms. Karen, you can call roll, please.
Paul Wagaman.
President.
Philip Combs.
President.
Lynn Larson is absent at this time. Brian Parsons.
Here.
Robert Estrada.
Here.
Ryan Pearson is excused at this time. Don Daniels.
Here.
You have quorum.
Great. Before us, we have the minutes of June seventh, two thousand twenty three. I'm looking for a motion.
A motion.
Mr. Combs made a motion. Do I have a second?
Oh, second.
Okay. Which one? Mr. Parsons seconded. Do I have any discussion or changes? Hearing or seeing none at this time. All those in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, hearing, the minutes passed for June seventh, as written. Thank you. Any changes to our agenda tonight?
No, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. At this time, I'll open up public comment. Anyone wishing to speak before the commissioners is able to do so. We have a empty seats before us tonight, so there's no one in public. Is there anyone online?
No, Mr. Chair.
No one online? So we'll close the public comment at this particular time. There is no public hearing tonight. There is no unfinished business. We move right to number eight. Fast moving under new business, the review of the updated twenty four, geez, I need glasses. Twenty four CP, CPPR, oh my goodness, requirements per the two thousand twenty three straight state legislative session with a mouth.
Yes. Apologies for that, Mr. Chair. I'll share my screen in just a moment, but just where we're at is because the legislature, the state legislature is moving so quickly with land use and housing bills in particular. What we have for you tonight is just an update on three bills that were adopted this year and go into effect either this year, excuse me, either July first or within a few months of that, that the Lakewood process for the twenty four comprehensive plan updates, we're going to try to bring that into now what will be coming in front of you next spring for the twenty four comprehensive plan process. Some of it is required to be done that way. Some of it, we're trying to consolidate what technically we could take longer to do, but would just drag this whole process out for the public. And it, it just seems to staff that it would be better to go ahead and do this all at once as much as possible. So with that, I'll start to share my screen. And by the way, thank you for indulging this very different way of running this meeting, and I'm so glad that it worked out. So again, talking about the twenty four comprehensive plan periodic review, that's what that acronym stat acronym stands for. Requirements that came out of the legislative session this year. So since last September, as you're well aware, you've been hearing a number of different presentations to yourselves, and then we had guests come in and here as well. Our Parks and Recreation Board for one evening at least, things that are going to be included in the two thousand twenty four comprehensive plan review. Once more, in this last legislative session, the state legislature adopted three bills in particular. There were a number of others, but these three in particular are going to really affect where Lakewood is going with its twenty four process. And I'm sorry, one thing I should say as well is, Mr. Chair, I'm gonna just keep going and listen until you tell me to stop if any of you have a question, okay?
You got it.
Okay, thanks. So the three bills are housing unit density that came out of House Bill eleven ten. And then House Bill thirteen thirty seven is one that has a whole slew of new ADU or accessory dwelling unit requirements. And then eleven eighty one is another big bill that has quite a few changes for comprehensive plans as well as development regulations related to climate change and resiliency. So just a quick reference point for everyone, this is the city's current zoning. And we're sitting in the middle of downtown, which is part of the downtown sub area, that red blob right in the middle of the city. But as you can see, there's a number of other zones, the yellow, the various shades of yellow are the primary single family residential. And then you see some lighter and darker brown, that's multifamily. The oranges and pinks are the commercials. And then those purple shades on the east side of the city are air corridors, one and two, where there's really a limited ability to put any residential or any residential at all because of safety issues with North McCord Airfield. And then the two shades of green are open space recreation. The grays, there's a couple of shades of those as well, are industrial areas. On top of that, if you'll remember, there are what are now called centers of municipal importance, and there's eight of those within the city right now. They're in various parts, and they predate the sub areas that we've been talking about, the downtown and the Lakewood Station when there is a Tillicum center of municipal importance that closely overlaps, but isn't exactly the same as the Tillicum sub area. But all of these are areas that have been in the comprehensive plan for at least ten years, and there are policies and visions for how these parts of the city would be developing over time, the type of uses that would be in them. And so we have to also remember to take a look at this in the twenty four process when we're looking at all of the other bills, along with what you've already heard about so far since last September. So, starting with House Bill eleven ten, which is talking again about the density of housing. Basically, the rule is for Lakewood because of its size, which is at about sixty four thousand right now. There must be at least, and this is not per acre, this is per lot, two units per lot. And then also four units per lot if it's within quarter mile walking distance of a quote major transit stop. The other time when it's four units per lot is if at least one of those units is constructed as an affordable housing unit. So the map you see on this screen here is the darker orange is the within a quarter mile walking distance of transit. And then the yellows are again those single family areas that are further out from that. So you can think of this as the orange areas is where it would be the four units per acre, and then the yellows is where it would be two, I'm sorry, per lot. And then the yellows is where it would be two units per lot unless you had affordable units where the density would go up. So any questions on that?
Seeing none? Nope.
Okay, okay.
Oh, excuse me, Mr. Estrada.
Okay, go ahead.
So what's considered a major transit stop, you say defined stop on a high capacity, we're talking about buses also?
Uh, yeah, right over here on the left side is the definition that came out of this bill, and unfortunately, right now, there's actually multiple definitions of the major transit stop in different parts of state law, which is just incredibly frustrating, but what we're operating off of is high capacity transit commuter rail on rail or fixed guideway systems and then bus rapid transit. And so for Lakewood, the map you see here and the dotted line that kind of runs right down the middle, the belly of the city, and then you'll see the little half circle down here in Tillicum. This is in reference to not only where we have existing transit, and I know it's really small on this map, and but I'll, I think you'll see it later as well. There's this kind of teal or turquoise color here, that's the sounder station. And then up here is the Pierce Transit Station in the downtown. And then also down here, it's really hard to see, it's a darker purple than that fuchsia. That is where a planned stop in Tillicum for the sounder is scheduled to go. So you have those three commuter sounder spots and mass transit with buses in the Pierce Transit Center. What you also have on this map is this bright purple kind of down Bridgeport along South Tacoma Way and Pacific Highway. And then some east west, I'm, I'm not sure exactly where these lines are. I think it's a hundred and eighth and then one another that's south. And then it also continues over a little bit into the far east part of the city. That is the draft. What's the word I'm thinking of? Design or the draft pattern for a future bus rapid transit route? So for Lakewood, and we're not unique to this, but for Lakewood, we are reacting to now a state law that says you have to plan for this additional density at that four units per lot. In our case, down in Tillicum for a sounder station that's not scheduled now to get completed until twenty forty five. And yeah, and the bus rapid transit route is at least out twenty thirty, and that depends on if sound transit has enough money to proceed. Once they get started on their process, it's scheduled to be a seven year process to set up the bus rapid transit stations and stops that would have to happen. So again, the state law is telling us we have to plan like these things are already here, even though it may be literally decades before at least the one in Tillicum's done, and we don't know at this point how long it's going to be for bus rapid transit. But those are the major transit stops that apply here in Lakewood.
So we're not talking about bus lines per se, but only major hubs?
Correct, correct. Yeah.
Thank you.
And so, and I guess for some of the older cities or bigger cities, those systems are already in place, and so they can do this quite easily, but there are a number of cities that are asking questions, and for instance, DuPont is saying you're calling us a quote high capacity transit jurisdiction, and they're also waiting until twenty forty five because they're supposed to get that extension down to them for sounder at that point, but they're having to plan like they already have bus service and sounder service. So we're not alone, but it is, it is a pretty glaring issue that a lot of cities are starting to ask questions about. As it stands, those are the rules we have to follow. So that, that's the big eleven ten where it's either two units per lot or four units per lot if you're within a quarter walking, a quarter mile walking distance of those major transit spots. Then you start to see the exceptions or where it doesn't apply. And so this map is of Lakewood showing you where critical areas are. Because if it is a lot with a critical area, you do not have to do that two unit per lot or four unit per lot. So obviously, on the west side, there's some significant ones, it's lakes, it's some of the creeks and their associated wetlands and wetland buffers. You also see it, though, on the east side around where some of those four unit per lot spots are, that kind of hatchmark blue in a couple of different spots. Oops, sorry. So whether we're actually talking about all of those areas seeing differences in their zoning is really going to depend on once the city gets done with calculating how all of these things truly affect the number of lots of that will have to fall under this rule. It's going to be very complicated to, to write this into code, but it'll probably end up being here's the general rule for like, let's just look at the yellow areas for now. The general rule is two units per lot, except critical areas, buffers, et cetera, and then the same language for those that would be four units per lot unless you've got critical areas nearby. So some of the other rules that came out of eleven ten is aside from the significant up zoning and density that that is, that's not saying multifamily zones, you now can go from thirty five units per acre up to fifty four, for instance, it is saying single family detached areas of the city, you will now have at least two units everywhere unless you have the critical areas. And it might be four units a lot, so that is a significant number. We did the math, if you remember, a few meetings ago, and it was something like twenty seven thousand potential new units in the city. But that is, of course, going to be limited by first and foremost where the critical areas are, and then you'll see some other exceptions to the rule in a moment. But as we're moving ahead now into development regulations for all this stuff, the city has to use the same process, so the same administrative review and environmental review that you would use on any other single family resident. You must allow zero lot line short subdivisions. You can only use administrative design, meaning you don't have hearing examiner process for approval. And you can't have any standards that are more restrictive than this detached single family area. And then the other exception you'll see here on this page is if by doing this, you end up with something that's less than a thousand square feet for a, for a lot, that, that's not going to apply, that, that lot would fall out. Then we get into parking. And again, parking may not, Lakewood may not require off-street parking as a condition within half a mile of a major transit stop. You have to, I'm sorry, you may not require more than one off-street parking space as a condition if it's smaller than six thousand square feet. And you may not require more than two off-street parking if it's greater than six thousand square feet before there's any zero lot line subdivisions. So those of you who talk this parlance all the time, I, I think you can probably see that that's another significant change for Lakewood's position on parking. Especially as we just talked about it in Lakewood Station District Sub Area as well as downtown, just the idea of how many you can have on, on the lot itself versus off-street when the city doesn't allow off-street parking anyway. What is this going to do to the parking realities in the city of Lakewood? So you start to look down at the bottom of the slide, and there are some things that the city can do to show through the, what they're calling an empirical study by a credentialed expert that shows.
Give me one minute. Mr. Estrada has a question.
So is, is the assumption here that if you're near a major transit center, then you won't require either transportation or fewer than two cars or something along that line? Is that the idea?
That is the assumption made by legislature when they adopted this bill, yes.
So they're assuming that people that live close to the transit center won't have more than one car?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. And this, this and the other two bills that I'll be sharing with you tonight, all of them are, you know, implemented statewide, and they were done as a one size fits all. And so other jurisdictions, just like Lakewood right now, are looking at these bills and seeing how there are a lot of things that don't make sense specifically for their city. And so this is one that I think is going to be an issue for Lakewood to be talking about quite a bit. As it stands, these are the rules. We'll see if any tweaking happens. If enough noise is made about how these rules don't make sense in the next legislative session, but we're just trying to interpret the bill as it reads right now. Any other questions on that?
That's it.
Okay. So there is this idea of saying, hey, we have this study that shows if you do this parking stuff, it's going to be less safe for vehicle drivers or passengers if the parking requirements were applied. And I don't know how well that would work within Lakewood, but we're certainly going to be looking at it. We're certainly going to consider what we can do to ameliorate some of these effects that I don't think were intended by the legislature, but do occur here in Lakewood. The other thing that's a big exception to where this stuff is going to apply is utilities, water and sewer. And as you know, the city does not own either the water district or the sewer facilities or utilities. So taking a look here, we have to find and verify whether you've got any private wells, group B water systems, which is six units or less on a single system or a group A system, which is larger but less than fifty. Or if there's not adequate water supply, then you can limit the area where all this stuff would apply to where there is current water availability. So again, this is going to be some consecrated concentrated communications with Lakewood Water District to verify what is going on with this issue. And just so you're aware, next Monday night, the city council is actually holding a special meeting with the water district at six P M. So before the regular council meeting to talk a number of things, but this is going to be one of the issues that the council raises with them, so we should get some good information out of them relatively quickly. Oops. And then for sewer, again, you can limit to two units per lot versus having to deal with four if it's only onsite sewage systems or that sorry, that the, the onsite sewage system would serve it until the sewer system would bring development at the time of construction. So on this map that you're seeing here, you've got green and then you have orange. And what you have here are green, which is the public and orange, which are private sewer lines. As you know, Lakewood's only twenty six years old, and most of this predates that by quite a bit, and we have sewer utility improvements coming in right now into Tillicum. But there are still areas of the city that are only on septic, and there's no plans anytime in the near future to sewer them. So we're going to be talking to Pierce County Sewer Utility to figure out what and where that would affect how this two units per lot, a four unit per lot bill is going to apply. So that's the main eleven ten. Here's an alternative, also in eleven ten. Alternatively, instead of doing all of that math we just did, I think this was supposed to be an easier math equation that came from the city or from the state, but we'll see if that turns out to be the case for Lakewood. If you just say at least seventy five percent of the single family lots are allowing two units. I'm sorry, forgive me, everybody. Applying eleven ten to seventy five percent of the lots in the city and then twenty five percent of them are exempt from it altogether. And what this is doing is saying if you've got displacement issues, critical areas, other things, other types of hazards like sea level rise, wildfires, that twenty five percent of the city, you can just pull out altogether, and then you're dealing with the other seventy five percent. And then it ups the walking distance from transit to half a mile. So if you look at this map here, the half mile is this medium medium dotted line, the quarter mile that we were just talking about earlier is the smaller hatchmark. So this is increasing then the distance from major transit routes where you would do four units per lot if you do this alternative choice within the bill. If you do the alternative, you can ask for more time looking at areas that are at risk of displacement, looking for utility deficiencies. And then you have either five years or ten years essentially to update your planning to show how you're going to bring those areas that you exempt at the start back into the full purview of eleven ten. This is probably something we'll look at again very closely at the staff level to see if this applies. Because there are so many critical areas, because as you have all spoken about recently in this area, this is where we're talking four units per lot on these spots, but this is high areas of risk of displacement. So we're talking again about which, which policy is going to govern in the end. But we have to weigh all this stuff and just work our way through the language of this bill to figure out what exactly we're going to do. So any questions on eleven ten before I go into the next one? Oh, I'm sorry, there's one more thing. The last thing in eleven ten is that it says you have to allow at least six of nine kinds of middle housing. And the list is duplexes, triplexes, four, five, six plexes, townhouses, stacked flats, courtyard apartments and cottage, cottage housing. And then you can also use ADUs. Lakewood already allows all nine of those things. So what we're going to do is take a look at where they're allowed and also what the development regulations are for them to see if any of that needs changing. But this is a part of eleven ten that the city's pretty comfortable with. We've already met the requirements for.
Good.
So any questions on eleven ten?
Nope.
Okay, keep going then. So the next bill is also exclusively about accessory dwelling units, and no, I'm not going to walk you through every single one of these bullet points. What I'm probably going to do, and some of this you did receive in tonight's packet, but I think I'll send this PowerPoint to you as well because it helps summarize it even more. But these are all things that the city has to do in relating to regulating ADU construction. City doesn't have impact fees, but if it did, they have to be no more than half of what you would charge the main primary residents. We, we are just doing this right now, but the, the owner of a lot does not have to occupy either the primary or the ADU. And then it has this list of the various permutations. Sorry, the various permutations of if you have two ADUs or you have one ADU and one permanent, or primary residence, all of that stuff, the math is very complicated. Looking at the minimum lot sizes, the gross floor area, the roof heights, setback and other bulk standards. Talking about detached or allowed attached ADU requirements. And then not requiring public street improvements as a condition of permitting ADUs is also going to be a big issue for Lakewood, I think, that last bullet point on this screen. Because the city obviously built out with the densities, particularly on the west side, anticipating that that was going to be it. And now we're talking about doubling the number of lots out there, but not requiring any public street improvements when those ADUs start to come in. So that's going to be something the city needs to analyze very closely.
Yes, Mr. Oh, Mr. Pearson, Arsons.
Uh, one quick question. I, I noticed on the list there, it says not establishing a ma- max gross floor area requirement. Does that mean ADUs can be as big as they want to be? Is that, or am I reading that incorrectly?
Um, the qualifier there is on those that are less than a thousand square feet.
Got it.
So if they are bigger than that, for whatever reason, then yes, you could do a maximum gross floor area.
Great. And Mr. Combs.
On the third bullet down says allowing at least two ADUs on all lots that and then it defines how those ADUs are. When we talked about this before, I got the impression that we were already, that we were counting a primary and then one ADU as that standard. But the way I read this now, two ADUs mean accessory dwelling units to some accessory to something, so that would mean a primary plus two. So yeah, is that, is that how you're understanding it too right now?
That's how we're understanding it too right now, but we are waiting for some interpretations by the Association of Washington Cities, the Department of Commerce and the Municipal Research Center that is here in the state. All of those organizations are taking a look at this bill and all the math and the numbers that I'm trying to throw at you very fast to see exactly what is in there. Unfortunately, this was a bill that had a lot of fingers in its, in its construction or drafting, and so not all of it is making a hundred percent sense, and this is one of those places. And this ADU bill is separate and apart from what we've been talking about with twelve twenty and the idea of planning for so many units for affordable housing in the different area median income levels, and it also didn't really dovetail with current ADU rules. So everybody's trying to figure out how, how all these things gel or jive together, and we're, we're just not sure yet.
Yeah, it, the third of the, from the bottom says allowing ADUs to be converted from existing structures, and I know we've had a lot of talk about making sure everything's brought up to code if anyone wanted to do something as far as, you know, setback requirements and all that, and I think this kind of flies in the face of that as well. So and I'm, I'm not opposed to either approach. It's just helpful to understand what it is, and I, I think that, yeah, we may have to look at being a little more lenient than we have been.
Yeah.
More in the past, yeah.
It, what's happening here, and we talked about this a little bit at the last couple of meetings as well, I think this is new territory for the state legislature to get this detailed and, and adopting requirements on local land use. This is kind of unprecedented in terms of the exact things they're, they're saying you have to do or that you cannot do. And so this again is going to be coming up against longstanding, in some cases, regulations and policies that various cities have had in place, but right now, this is the, the state law that we all have to comply with. So it's not only looking at this bill and trying to figure out what to do, it's also unpacking past and current things that the city's adopted to see if it needs changing as well.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Then you can do a limit of two ADUs if the lot is less than two thousand square feet, but again, as you say, Mr. Combs, that's in addition to the principal unit. So think of a residential lot with its principal residence and two ADUs that are, is at So think of a residential lot with its principal residence and two ADUs that are, is at two thousand square feet. And then you can do certain regulations, but again, they're, they're pretty limited to basically health and safety. And you can prohibit ADUs when there's no sewer. You can also restrict the use of ADUs for short-term rentals. And I know that's something that Lakewood is interested in doing. There's a concern that this is gonna become a whole new, I don't know if it's Airbnb, but short-term rental issues for being along the I-five corridor and also being near the base. So any, anything as well that you see down at the bottom, any conflicting regulations that the city may adopt for whatever reason and are still in place after the bill, the bill deadline hits are superseded by this law. So they specifically said, whatever you have in the books right now, if it doesn't conform with this, it's no good anymore after a date certain. So again, we will be taking a look very closely at what may need to change. So at the least, it's the city adopting these regulations rather than the, the state coming in and saying, okay, these are now the rules that apply. You also, again, talking about sewer infrastructure, critical areas or other quote unsuitable physical characteristics. And what that means, I couldn't tell you right now, no ADUs there. But for sewer, again, this is talking about, I'm sorry, this should be parking. Can't require off-street parking, you can't require more than one, you can't require more than two. So this is similar language to what we just went through in eleven-ten. And then the provisions for off-street parking do not apply. And then these are the reasons why. So it's that empirical study that I mentioned before. Or if it's a lot with a critical area or their buffer. So that analysis that we're about to launch into internally at the city of where exactly those buffers and those critical areas lie in relation to all of these lots that could otherwise be affected is gonna be key to figuring out what is the true effect of eleven-ten and thirteen-thirty-seven in Lakewood. This is just saying that if you have an older neighborhood that does have homeowners association rules or condominium rules that were in place prior to the adoption of the bill, they actually can limit some of this. If those rules are created after the effective date of the act, they are limited and may not prohibit. So if you have an older HOA that for whatever reason wouldn't allow any of this stuff to happen, that's gonna actually be held controlling. So that's the other thing that the city needs to be trying to track. And we're trying to figure out how to even do this efficiently, but finding CCNRs and HOA rules to see where that may affect this rule going, or this bill going into effect in Lakewood. So any other questions on the ADU bill?
Nope.
Okay, one more. Eleven-eighty-one is talking about climate change. So it's a little bit different focus from the last two bills I just went through. But the idea is now the Growth Management Act itself recognizes climate change and planning for resiliency as an actual goal within that state law that's never been there before. So that's new. And now there are also rules that are being applied to local governments about planning for these things. The city has its Energy and Climate Change Chapter in place now. We have our work plan in place. We've done the Tree Code, we've done the urban forestry stuff that you heard about recently and launching that program, hopefully in the near future. But there's also a need now to verify that the element that was adopted conforms to this bill or what updates might be required. There's also this idea of quote environmental justice. So making sure in the comprehensive plan and our goals and policies, there is a recognition of maybe past any unequal or inequitable experiences for people in Lakewood. And if you want to think about those maps you've seen of, in particular, Tillicum, Woodbrook, Springbrook, up into the east side of the city where there's less tree canopy cover, there's more heat island, there's worse air quality, those types of things. That's where we're talking environmental justice and trying to figure out how to concentrate improvements in those areas first. And then the, the map that you see in front of you, this is also talking about a new concept in state law, which is not finalized, but is on its way through the State Building Code Council, which is Wildland Urban Interface. So I won't bore you with horrid detail, but essentially the red is higher risk, the orange is lower risk of wildfires happening. And what this policy is saying is as you're doing your land use planning, this has to be taken into account as well. What that exactly means in terms of the existing development, for instance, on the west side, south of Fort Silicon Park, down in Woodbrook, when we're looking at the new Tillicum Subarea Plan. And then to a lesser extent, up toward the north side of the city and also over in some of the industrial areas of the city or Clover Park Technical College, all of this has to be worked out as well. The idea here is separating human, sorry, separating human development from wildfire-prone landscapes and protecting existing residential development. So what the heck does that mean in a built-out city? Protecting existing residential development at first blush, the answer would be removing trees near the structures themselves in order to have kind of that fire break before something were to hit the building. And then looking at wildfire-prone landscapes, clearing out things, looking at the type of species that are being planted. And of course, this is contrary to tree preservation and some of the other things that have also been added to things that Lakewood has to be considering right now. And improving tree canopy because of greenhouse gas emissions and carbon sink concerns. So again, trying to figure out what this means and how Lakewood would interpret it as part of the twenty-four process is gonna be complex. The capital facilities plan of the comp plan needs to show quote green infrastructure and where those are. We need to be working with all of the utilities that own capital facilities. So again, Lakewood Water District and this county sewer department as well as power utilities. And then we have to all, this, this isn't really new stuff, talking about existing and proposed utilities. What is new is taking a look at transportation facilities and multimodal safety. So this multimodal part, meaning bike, ped, electric bike, whatever it is in the future, that's a new piece that has to be added into this. And also the American with Disabilities Act's Transition Plan. Again, Lakewood's transportation system and structures predate ADA in a lot of areas of the city. And so things as simple as the adequate crosswalks and the breaks in sidewalks to allow wheelchairs, bikes, whatever they may be, the walking sticks for those that are blind, being able for them to not navigate without hitting cracks in the sidewalk or vegetation growing up. Those are the types of things that the city is actually in the middle of doing. It's creating a transition plan as we speak. So that will be incorporated into the twenty-four comp plan as well. And then the parks and recreation element has to have a tree canopy coverage and evaluation. And thank the Lord, we already did this. So we'll be pulling the transportation, I'm sorry, the tree cover distribution information that came with the Tree Code last year into the twenty-four process. So this will not be a surprise to you. It'll be data that we're able to pull that's recent enough to still be well accurate and, and usable. Okay. So some questions that are undoubtedly in your mind, they're in my mind, they're in other city staff's minds. How are we gonna work out where density happens in an under eleven-ten? Do we take alternative one or two? How are we gonna handle the ADU new rules? What do we need to do differently in our capital facilities, utilities or park and rec elements under that third bill we just talked about? And then how do all of those mesh with the existing twelve-twenty requirements for planning for housing at all economic segments and a particular number of those units, right? And then which one of these is the most important? Where do we let things rise above the others or get decided against compared to other things? That's basically the faces you see along the bottom is, is what's going on in city staff right now, trying to figure out how to react to these new bills. Not to say it's impossible, it's just gonna be complicated. So for the next steps, just for your benefit, because as you know, we're gonna meet not for another month now, we're gonna be off on July fifth. This is where we're gonna be focusing the next month internally and hopefully get you some additional detail next meeting on July nineteenth. What are the results of the internal review on all of these bills? What does that do to what we thought we were gonna do with our housing and land use planning up to this point? And then we're gonna be doing some public outreach that won't necessarily come to you as a commission, but we're gonna do some extensive outreach to the public on both housing and climate change to try to get some early feedback. And we'll report those things back to you. There's a possibility that one of your meetings would be used either as an open house or immediately after a public open house about these issues as well. We're, we're trying to figure out if that makes sense. And then we'll be starting work on all of the sub-area updates and reviews. And then all of these other elements have to get reviewed too. And these, we've talked about a little bit with you, bringing in the department heads or other experts on these issues. But these are ones that haven't really been touched very heavily yet, but need to be as part of this process. The table on the right shows you as it stands right now, the planned new organization for the city's comprehensive plan. And this follows pretty closely to what you see in state law now as the various required pieces to the comprehensive plan. So this is a purposeful choice to make this comprehensive plan locally as consistent with state law as we can for future updates. A quick look at a timeline, it seems a long way away, but it's really not. May first of next year is when you will begin the full process with public hearings and reviewing the substantive content to do your annual recommendation to city council. But it'll be obviously much more complicated than what we just finished with the nine in twenty-two-three. And then at this point, the plan is starting that on May first, giving the commission at least until June twenty-sixth. And this obviously is subject to change if needed. But at this point, June twenty-sixth, Planning Commission finishes its work. The city council starts taking up the comprehensive plan process in July. And it has a very quick timeline right now, but this may well change based on what feedback they're hearing from the public. The idea is to try to get this done no later than September first because they will be dealing with the next two-year budget cycle. But this takes a lot of their time next year, they know that. So this is a very tentative schedule, but for you, think between now, which is June twenty-first, twenty-two-three and May first, twenty-two-four. Those other elements, the sub-area plans, the reaction to all of these bills, that's what's gonna be going on. And I will not force you to go through this every meeting, I promise. But we will be bringing you kind of milestone decisions and drafts. And maybe again, have things like we did earlier this year with representatives from utilities or some of the other affected agencies and our partners to come and talk to you in more detail about specific topics. And that is it, Mr. Chair. So I'm happy to answer any other questions about all of that.
Yeah, Ms. Tiffany. So with all of this on the agenda of staff and limited staff, are they gonna be bringing in extra, you know, consultants or additional individuals to help accomplish this? Doesn't seem even feasible to go through this much of a of information and get it clarified and moved on as you proposed to us in your process.
Yeah, we do have Burke Consulting involved, and I think most of you will remember them. They've done a lot of work with the city on our sub-area plans recently, so they're familiar with Lakewood's code and zoning. And they are helping us out. And then we also have several other consultants working on specific pieces of the plan. So it's not all on community development staff or public work staff or parks and rec staff to deal with this. We all will be very much involved with it, but we aren't doing it alone. And community and economic development is in the process within the next couple of weeks of hiring what we're calling our neighborhood coordinator staff. It's a new position at the city. And they will be an externally focused staff member. And their first major project will be this. They will be helping me with external communications about this comp plan process, helping with the events that we set up, the, the communication back from the public about whatever issue is that person's passion. So fingers crossed, we're gonna be able to get through this, but it is gonna be a heavy lift.
Okay, Mr. Combs.
Thanks for the quick summary on that or, or it's extensive. And I'm excited to see what comes of it, and I know it'll be a long process. I couldn't help but think that every one of those things, house bills, kind of flies in the face of the canopy coverage and tree policy that we just passed, or the, the city council approved. And part of me wonders if there's any, would it make sense to consider pausing, you know, that or, you know, slowing that down so that we can figure out all this other stuff so that you don't have ninety percent of the applications going through now that wouldn't have been necessary or redoing it. And I mean, it's, it seems like a complete redundancy for all the community to go through that process when this is going on. But that, that's just kind of me thinking maybe too logically.
I, I think what we're gonna have to do is, as I mentioned, within about the next month or so, we should have a much better handle on the three bills coupled with twelve-twenty and what that's gonna do. And that, that analysis is also gonna look at what we just adopted with the tree canopy cover or the city council is scheduled to adopt on July third now. And then also the Tree Code and see where we're gonna come up against, you know, true inconsistencies or conflicts. And again, we're not alone on this. Other jurisdictions are going through this same shock, looking at all of these bills. Not to say we can't do anything at all until the next legislative session and hope that something changes. But we are gonna try to go forward with our eyes as open as possible and be as transparent as possible with where these things don't mesh. And so when this goes out to the general public or when public hearings are held, it's gonna be, these are the rules, these are the, these other rules that might apply too. And how they come together is anybody's guess. What I hear you say, Mr. Combs, though, is that those that are subject right now to these new Tree Code rules that went to effect this year, how might, what is being required of them right now only last a year, right? A year and a half before the rules have to change? That I don't have a good answer for right now. We're gonna have to figure that out.
All right. Well, it sounds good. I guess I would just keep that open. And if we're looking at the whole year, maybe, and I'm just thinking, you know, if this, if this was a business, you might consider suspending it just so that you don't have that redundancy or that layover. You can actually think through what you wanna do with it. Cause you know, it's a lot of work to put that whole thing together and launched and put fees and process. And, and you've got a lot of other stuff that we probably could and should focus more closely on. But that's just, I'll leave that to city staff to kind of.
Well, I thank you for the comment. And what I'll do is go to Dave Buer and see where he would like to do or what he would like to do with that issue. Because it's a legitimate one, absolutely.
So I do have a question, kind of related to all of this. But I've had several citizens live in the Oak, I'll just kind of reference to the Oak Brook area. There's some rumblings around, around the golf course. There's still some vacant lots that people have interest in building. I wouldn't necessarily call it an Airbnb, but it's for groups coming possibility from all over, all over internationally, to bring them over on golf packages to golf here. And the concern was is in those areas, if that was allowed or not allowed, those type of homes. And I said, well, do you have a covenants, you know, agreement in your whatever addition, you know, fourth, seventh, whatever? And most of them do. And so I said, you would have to relate back to that because now it's prior to this new law, state laws that came, that you just proposed.
Correct.
And that would, my saying, you check it out to see if that would. And that would, my saying, you check it out to see if that would trump anything else that came up on if they want to call them, you know, a primary house with ADUs, if they you know, fourplex, all of those things they were concerned about because the primary use for these vacant lots were going to be definitely short-term. You know, Airbnbs, whatever you wanted to call them. They weren't private, you know, or primary residents. They were going to be used specifically for drawing groups to come in and golf. Has the city heard anything about that rumblings?
I'm not sure that they've heard that, but I, this goes right to that idea of making sure that the short-term rental regulations are where they need to be for Lakewood. So looking at the size, the number of people, how long the stay would be, what where in the city, short-term rentals would even be allowed. All of that is going to be part of the conversation. And I think that would apply directly to the questions that's been brought to you.
Okay. So then my question is, is that kind of me relating back to, you know, go back to your CCRs and see what that is and, and, you know, go with your lawyers and everything else, how, if that trumps, you know, all the other things that you presented to us today.
Yeah, the, the issue for them will be that specific language that the state legislature adopted that said anything adopted after the effective date of the bill is invalid. So if it's truly a pre-existing language in their CCNRs, then yes, that would do it. But if they were, for instance, to try in, I think it's less than a month now before the official effective date. That whatever they did would not count. So they need to do a, a look at where it is in pave place right now in their CCNRs and see if that would, would govern.
Yep, Mr. Estrada.
Am I correct in, in, in believing that one can build on a lot, but only to a certain percentage of the lot?
And that is, that is traditionally the rules.
Okay, so with ADUs, are we going to be able to exceed that requirement or the restriction?
The way this bill or multiple bills now are reading, the rules that would in effect limit the number of units on that lot because of impervious surface or setbacks or whatever else. Cities are being told you have to change those rules to allow this number of units. So whereas in the past, there, those rules stood in place and said, you can only be so close to your fence line or they're going blah, blah, blah. That is now being told to local governments, you need to change those rules to allow this higher density. So it's, it's kind of turned on its head.
You know, given that every jurisdiction having, having to deal with this, is there any information share or network that's getting together to share information that people are coming up with? Because obviously it's new to everybody and it's going to be, you know, interesting for everybody to implement. Is there anything out there like that?
There are things and they're just popping up now because these bills are so new. But for instance, the Department of Commerce was actually told by the legislature, they have to develop some model ordinances and some training. So those are being done now. And then again, the Association of Washington Cities, as well as the Association of Washington Counties are kind of doing the same thing. They're doing their internal analysis and they hope to develop some recommendations and guidance. So we're waiting for all of those things. Unfortunately, given the short timeframe between now and when all of the twenty-four stuff has to be adopted, everybody's just running ninety miles an hour. And we can't completely stop and wait for that guidance. We have to move ahead and hope that when that guidance comes out, if we have to change things, it's not going to be too major. It's just an unfortunate series of events, whatever you want to call it.
Yep, Mr. Wegeman.
I mean, so the, the whole, I guess the goal that they're, they're trying to get us to do is more housing and hopefully more affordable housing.
Correct.
And that, and some of the stuff that you were briefing there, it, it threw out the word affordable housing. What, what is that number? What, I mean, what, what is an affordable house? Or affordable living space?
The very fundamental definition there is no more than thirty percent of your gross monthly income goes towards your housing costs. So whatever you make, you're not putting out more than thirty percent of that for your housing. And like, like you say, Mr. Wegeman, what we have now with some of these bills and the rules that are required within them, the development costs to do this, it, it may not be physically possible without significant subsidy in the construction process to allow these to come out at a price point that people can afford to either rent or buy. It's going to be very difficult. The trade associations for construction were very vocal about this in this last session. They'll probably continue to be so. But just for instance, the wildland interface stuff I mentioned. Mr. Buer has done some initial research there. And looking at that coupled with some of the energy efficiency requirements, it's something like twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars per unit that has been added recently with these new rules, if they, you know, truly stand the test of time. And so how does that fall into this idea of all of this is for the purpose of affordable housing? It's, it's a big glaring question.
Yep, Mr. Combs.
Tiffany, just wanted to clarify, you said seventy percent of you know, of the income is, was a definition. And I just want to clarify, do you mean that because everyone's going to have a different income? Actually, Pierce County and HUD would define that based on the area, right? Or you, is there a different standard that you're talking about that's different from that for affordable? Cause affordable typically is based off of the HUD measurements and, and Pierce County, of course, has their area. And so it'd be seventy or eighty percent of whatever AMI is for that area. And so it'd be defined by that. I think the definition you mentioned is typically what you would hear by a qualifier for a housing. Not necessarily with the, the, so I was just curious which one you're, which you, when you meant.
I was just simply trying to find the most basic definition of the term affordable housing, which is that thirty percent. You're absolutely right that HUD has defined what's poverty line and what's affordable or what are the, excuse me, what is the income max that you can have in order to qualify for varying amounts of subsidy or section eight vouchers or what have you. So both things I think are right. It's just if the code requirements, we will be referring to the HUD definitions and also area median income as defined. I think it's a combination now of Office of Financial Management HUD. And there may be another economic driver that defines those different area median income levels.
Yeah, thanks. I was just going to say if anyone has, is curious to look that up, there's a table for that. And just go to Pierce County, you know, and it'll have it on there. Or I could send, I mean, I can look it up and send you a link. It's, it's available. And so for example, if the, if the average income for Pierce County was a hundred thousand, seventy thousand would, you know, if you, you had that much income, that would qualify as affordable housing qualifier. And, and anything beyond that would be above affordable.
And, and that link is actually also available on the city's website. So I'll send that out to everybody with the PowerPoint from tonight, too.
Thanks, it's done.
Sure.
Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Wegeman.
I mean, my wife said to me tonight, she had a conversation with another citizen in the community that said, we should have buses that go all the way down to Spanaway and all those kinds of things. My wife just said, does that even make sense? You know, when you only got two passengers on a bus? And this, this is some of the dilemma that we're getting here. The numbers don't work. I mean, I mean, you, you can try as you wish. You can wish all this stuff in the world, but the math, the, you know, I mean, you're, you go down the lows now and a two-by-four can double on you. It's well, shoot, then what the heck?
Absolutely.
Okay. Well, thank you for the update. We appreciate it. Do we have any other reports from city staff?
Not from me, Mr. Chair, and it looks like Councilmember Bokey's not here tonight. So where we sit now is again, a month hiatus. So we'll see you again on July nineteenth. And then at this point, we do plan to have no Planning Commission meetings in August either. So there'll just be the one meeting in July and then we'll see you again in September. When you come back in September, just know that your nose will be to the grindstone for I'll, we'll try to make this as efficient as possible for you, but just know that it is a heavy responsibility you're going to be carrying and we do appreciate that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Estrada.
I have here reports from commission members and staff that Tiffany is going to give us some information regarding how the racket club charges seniors or high school students for the use of the facilities.
I'm sorry. Yes, Mr. Estrada, Monday night, so two nights ago, no, last night because of Juneteenth, excuse me. There was the public hearing at the city council regarding the twenty twenty-three comprehensive plan amendments. And we did have Terry Wright from Lakewood Racket Club respond specifically to the questions from the Planning Commission. I'll send you the link if you want to hear his answer verbatim, but in substance, he mentioned the fact that the junior tennis players from school districts and also over the summer, non-members are allowed to come in. There is a fee, but it is not very high. The other one he mentioned was pickleball for seniors for the most part, but non-members are able to come in for like five dollars a game and they can do that all year round. And one reason they are wanting to do the construction of a certain height of their building to meet tournament requirements is because of the junior level tournaments that they want to continue to hold and expand, holding on their site. So they did respond. They do charge a fee. It's not completely free, but it is open to non-members.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from commissioners hearing CNN? We'll call this meeting adjourned.